I call this regular meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for October 24, 2023. Will the clerk please take the roll? Barbo?
Here.
Blackmer?
Bona?
Here.
Harpin?
Here.
Obasahan?
Here.
Oleskowitz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Nine present. We have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, we don't have minutes this week. Our clerk's office is quite busy with the upcoming elections. Hearing of visitors on agenda items. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. Who would like to speak? Okay. Moving on to council paper 11,790-3, Nornan amending Chapter III building codes. Is that the right one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Section 3-50.3 Taxes, Fees, and Penalties to Establish Registration and Inspection Fees for Short-Term Rentals Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law at the Meeting of September 26, 2023 and postponed to the Meeting of October 24. This has been published and is ready for vote. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Second?
Counselor Oleskowitz, seconded by Counsel Wilkinson. Any discussion? Counselor Harpin?
Just for point of clarification, for everybody that doesn't understand what the fees will be, I am gonna actually read what the ordinance will be. So, it will be all short-term rental units shall pay a fee of $200 per unit for inspection with an annual fee of $200 on all owner occupied properties. All non-owner occupied properties shall pay a fee of $350 per unit for inspection with an annual fee of $350. So, if you are owner occupied, it will be $400 combined. And if it is not owner occupied, it will be $700 combined between your inspection and your annual fee. So, I just wanted to make that clear for everybody involved.
And I just want to clarify, is that correct, Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I just read it from the paper that was given.
No, no, I meant is that, was that the intention?
Yes.
Because if it wasn't, then it could be fixed.
It's never been combined like that, but that was actual.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Yep. Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
No.
Obasahan?
No.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Five.
Blackmer?
Oh, Blackmer.
Yes.
Sorry.
Six yeas. Motion carries.
Council Paper 11,286, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding Various Fees Established in the City Code Postponed from the Meeting of October 10, 2023, with a return date of October 24, 2023. We had a printout of all of the fees at the last meeting. Motion to pass to a second reading and publish as a municipal bulletin would be in order.
So moved.
Wait a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Counselor Harpin?
Point of clarification. So, these are the fees that we've been working on for four years? This is the fees for everything?
Yep.
Okay. I know that we had mentioned a Schedule D in the ordinances, the new ordinances. Did we get a copy of Schedule D?
So, so at this point, these fees have been referred to the mayor and her, and her staff. And I believe they may have been passed on to the solicitor at this point.
Yes, that is correct. They are in the solicitor's office.
Yeah. So, I mean, we need to postpone this till we at least get answers back from the solicitor.
Okay. So, because that also, basically, a lot of it's striking the fees out of ordinances and putting them in an appendix.
Correct.
Correct. Um, so we had a motion. Do we want to rescind the motion and change it to continue instead of?
Rescind my motion and continue, uh, continue till?
Could we answer Counselor Harpin's question?
I'm sorry?
So, at the last meeting, this was given out, correct, Counselor? It was the last meeting or the meeting before that?
Yep.
Yeah.
But that, that's what was passed on along with the other changes to?
The two documents have been forwarded to the city solicitor.
Okay. I, I have not received a copy of Schedule D is what it's referred to in the ordinance. It tells everybody every part of the ordinance to refer to Schedule D. So, that's basically what I'm looking for.
Okay. I mean, yeah.
Okay. So, we're making a change. We rescinded the motion to pass to a second reading. We are going to, the motion is to continue till when?
Till whatever finance is pleasure.
Well, um,
In the administration.
Through the chair, mayor, how long do you?
I would expect that they would be back to us by the first meeting in November.
Okay. So, till the date certain, first meeting in November?
Correct. So, I rescind my motion and postpone it to the first meeting of November.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Counselor Sapienza. Discussion?
Yeah. The only thing I'd mention is it could come back, you know, with revisions or changes. So, just keep that in mind.
Okay. Just make sure we get an updated copy. Just ask that. And apparently not in quarters on the printout.
And make sure Counselor Harpin gets a copy of Schedule D.
Okay. Thank you. So, we have a motion to continue. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,286, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Z, Zoning Section Four Dimensional Regulations by Adding Section 4.17 Passed to a Second Reading. Publish as Required by Law at the Meeting of October 10. This has been published. And it, so a motion to adopt would be in order?
Move to adopt. Second.
Point of order.
Counselor Harpin?
Point of clarification, whatever you want to, um, I was out at the last meeting and it's my understanding, because this is going to a second reading, that it did pass at the last meeting.
Correct.
Okay. So, when I look back at the last meeting, the, the vote was five to two, which is not a two-thirds vote of the full council, which is a requirement of a zoning change or amendment based on Massachusetts general law.
It is, but it's based on the order to adopt, not on the, not to the publish. The motion was to pass to a second reading and publish. This is where you need your two-thirds vote for zoning, not in the first vote. Because this is where we're adopting it. The other one is not where we didn't adopt.
I would request, because I did call the lawyer of the day, and the lawyer of the day did recommend that we send it to the solicitor for review.
Mayor, do you want to?
So, the actual ordinance was reviewed by the solicitor? Are you questioning the vote, Counselor Harpin?
I'm, I'm questioning the vote. This is, this is the vote, if I'm, if I'm not wrong here, my understanding, this is the vote that came in based on a request from the developer of the old St. Francis lot.
Correct.
Um, and the ordinance change requires, because it is a zoning ordinance, a two-thirds vote of the full council. Now, when I called the lawyer of the day, he, he thought that this should be sent to the solicitor for review, the vote itself.
Yeah.
Because the vote is not two-thirds of the full council.
I understand that. And thank you for bringing it up. But it also, did you explain to the lawyer of the day our process, how we publish by our charter, and that we're actually voting, that was not in a vote to adopt, it was a vote to pass to a second reading and publish?
I, I did not. But it is still, it is still in question. And I would feel more comfortable bringing it to the solicitor for review.
It's too bad, because we have nine people. It would have been nice to have been able to vote on it. Anyone else have any recommendation? And mayor, do you, what, what is your input?
I'm happy to do whatever the council wants. I mean, if the council feels the vote needs to be vetted, happy to do that.
Counselor Bona?
Through the chair. So, mayor, there's no, no specific timeline we're working with here right now?
There's always a timeline, but not specifically for this. And this paper was brought to us through the administration. It didn't come through the normal course. We thought that it was a nice, a good change. So, if you, I'm happy to have the solicitor review the vote if that's the council's pleasure.
Counselor Shade?
Yes. In doing a lot of research on the charter more recently, the charter does not require a two-thirds vote to publish. It only requires the two-thirds vote when we actually vote on the ordinance, which is what we'd be doing now, as you've explained. But publishing does not require two-thirds. It just requires a simple majority. It's basically saying a public notice. So, we haven't actually taken any action except for notifying the public that we're about to do something. So, I, I feel comfortable moving forward. And tonight's vote would require the two-thirds. Thank you.
Any other? Counselor Wilkinson?
After hearing this from all different sides, I feel very comfortable moving forward tonight.
Counselor Bona?
I mean, we can vote on it. And in the meantime, check with the solicitor. And if we have to revote, then we revote.
That's an option.
Because I doubt the vote's gonna change either way.
And I also feel comfortable that we have nine people here. So, um, Counselor Harpin?
I, I would just suggest, I, I don't believe that you can revote. So, you, you have one vote. Either the vote is, is accepted or declined. It's passed or it's not passed. Because then it can't come back again for another two years. So, I would suggest that you vote on it and there be an issue. This is part of the zoning practice here in, in the city of North Adams, is, is publishing it and then adopting it. So, the Massachusetts general law does require a, a two-thirds vote. I think it would be a, a good due diligence on the part of the city council to ensure that their vote was accurate and that they're passing infr- uh, ordinances based on Massachusetts general law and under the recommendations of their solicitor as requested.
So, one, I will clarify. The state law doesn't talk about pass to a second reading in that vote. It talks about adopting the order, which is what we're doing. And that's a two-third, that's a two-thirds vote. And I understand that. Secondly, if we do something that's, if we vote it and we get an answer from the solicitor saying, no, we should do it, we should revote, we can do that because they've considered our actions to be not legal. So, obviously, we would redo it. We couldn't, wouldn't have to wait two years to redo a vote if that's the case. Again.
Well, that's not what it says in the Massachusetts general law.
The Massachusetts general law says vote to adopt.
It also says, "No proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw which has been unfavorably acted upon by a city council or a town meeting shall be considered by the city council or a town meeting within two years after the date of such unfavorable action."
Unfavorable, but also if we committed, if, if you commit a legal act, then it can't be an illegal act. Then it, you can bring it back because it was an illegal act. That's just to come. I don't know. You've made your point.
I, I made my call as I was requested to do several years ago before going to the solicitor to call the lawyer of the day. So, that's what I did. I explained the situation and I was recommended to send this to the solicitor. So, that, that is what I did based on.
A city council rules.
And when did you make that phone call?
Excuse me?
When did you make that phone call?
To the? Within the last week.
I guess I would have been a good, if, if you had done that and got that recommendation, you could have shot the mayor or me or somebody an email saying, hey, this is what I heard. And we could have done that. And before we brought it tonight and saved some time and possibly money. And, um,
Okay.
But I don't, that's fine. What is the council's pleasure?
Move on.
Counselor Bona?
To vote.
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 Okay. So, we have a motion to adopt. Any other discussion around the actual ordinance slash zoning? This is a roll call vote.
Point of order.
I'm sorry. You said we needed a second. I thought Counselor Wilkinson seconded it.
I'll be glad to.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought they did. And Counselor Harpin?
Um, did we receive a, a report from the planning board regarding this? Because I think that is also part of this.
Yes, they, yes, they did at the last.
Massachusetts general law.
Yes, we got the recommendation from the planning board voted at their last meeting.
That was an actual memo or whatever, write-up from the planning board?
I don't know if I got it from, if we got one from the planning board, but they were, they were, they did vote it. It was in there. They voted it, actually, they voted it the night before we did.
Okay.
At their, at their meeting.
Okay. Because it says we're supposed to get a report from the planning board.
I, we reported it out. I don't know.
I got a verbal report.
And I, and I was there. I voted it. And I guess I reported on behalf of the planning board.
I will say I was there.
It says a report, recommendations by the planning board has to be submitted to the town meeting or city council.
Doesn't say written report.
Well, let's see. So, we want to move forward, correct?
Yes.
This is a roll call vote. The second, it was, I don't even remember the second. Counselor Wilkinson?
The first.
No, he was the first. Okay. Then who was the second?
I'll second.
Counselor Oleskowitz. I, I heard two things and then Counselor Harpin asked a question or brought a point of order.
Okay.
Roll call vote. Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
No.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
No.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Six. Six yeas. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,305, An Ordinance Amending Chapter I, General Provisions, Section 5, Recordation of Ordinances Referred to General Government at the Meeting of September 12, 2023, with a return date of October 10, postponed to the Meeting of October 24. Do we have a motion slash update from the General Government Committee?
I can give you an update.
And then a motion to continue this to the next meeting where you will have language? Or are you gonna just?
Repeat that, please.
Okay, never mind. You're gonna give an update?
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation based on a language?
I was going, I was going to put that in my update.
Okay. But we have an ordinance. So, there also has to be a recommendation on the actual ordinance.
I will, at the end of my update, I'll give you the recommendation. How's that?
Okay.
Well.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Just scrolling through stuff.
Excuse me?
Is that the second again, right?
No.
Oh, this one's not?
Record recording minutes.
Record of?
And I'll stay here.
I'm sorry. Recording of ordinances.
Ordinances.
That's, that's why. Don't confuse me.
The General Government Committee met on this, and I should say on the next also. It was fairly well discussed. It was, there was some good interaction with the, the, the audience. This was brought forward to, and the, the final result was a unanimous vote to approve as presented.
Uh-uh. No, you made an amendment to the date, number days.
We did.
Okay, we did.
It was my understanding.
Okay.
That's what the?
Well, we made an amendment to change the days. And we all voted to approve as changed, I guess is the proper way to put it. In any event, uh, in, in the end, we, we did recommend to send, bring it back to council with approval vote. And since this is, Counselor Shade's, um, was, she did a lot of research on it. It's only fair to let her explain exactly what went on. So, I'll turn this over to Counselor Shade.
Thank you.
So, we need a motion to adopt this?
Motion to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
Then we probably need a motion to amend.
Move to amend.
Second.
You gotta make the motion what the amendment is.
First, does, does this need to be published and recorded by law?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion shouldn't be to move to adopt. It should be a motion to publish to a second reading and?
Pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Yes.
Second.
Okay. With that, a motion to amend the language that currently states within two business days of submission. It should say within 14 days of submission or passage. That was the recommended amendment through the general government meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Now, in speaking about the actual language, essentially, what this does is it will require the city clerk's office or somebody to publish any new ordinances that are presented to the public that are passed at these meetings. And it will require us to have them available to the public on our website within 14 days. This way, the public can be always informed of new ordinances, new laws, new changes that have been passed. So, they will get published online on our city website. And they will stay there until the E360 code software is able to update properly and add them to our charter and ordinances through that software. So, this way, anything that's new, the public will have access to anything new that is passed. So, everybody will know what the new rules are. And I think that's really important for transparency, that everybody has access to the most recent ordinance changes that we adopt. So, that was the purpose of this proposal. Yeah, after having conversations with the city clerk, this is what we recommended. And now, general government is recommending that we adopt this to change the current language, which only requires it to be in a book that's published in the city clerk's office, and now make it accessible online for the regular public.
Okay. Counselor Harpin?
I just want to give a kudos to Counselor Shade. I think this is a great ordinance. I, I know that we've all discussed this before and I have brought this up in city council, that things are confusing when they, they come to the city council, what ordinance or past ordinance we are using and referring to. I can only imagine how difficult it is for the public or people coming here from out of town and trying to understand our ordinances. So, I think this was, was a great step forward and I appreciate your work on it. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. I would also, so we'd have to vote on the amendment. So, we're voting all in favor of the amendment of changing two days to 14 days.
Aye.
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 Now, um, anything else on the actual ordinance as a whole? So, this is, uh, the motion was to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, two, oh, excuse me? We had Shade. And who was the other person who?
Wilkinson.
Wilkinson? Okay. All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,306, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 10 Junk and Secondhand Dealers, Article One, Section 10-3, Records of Purchases and Sales, Inspection of Books, Shopkeeper to Display Name, 10-4, Dealing with Minors Prohibited, 10-5, Business Hours, Referred to General Government and Finance Committee at the Meeting of September 12, 2023, with a return date of October 10, 2023, and postponed to the Meeting of October 2024. Um, General Government met on this on 10/17. Counselor Wilkinson, would you like to give an update?
Sure. This was referred to General Government. We met on this. Again, there, this was brought forth originally by Counselor Shade. So, I'm gonna let her expound on that in a minute. We had a very good input from people in the audience, special people that had secondhand dealers licenses. We got their input. They seemed to be in favor of moving this forward. In the end, it was recommended by the general government to bring it back to council with an approval of all items. And there's, I believe, four or five of them here. And again, I will let, she did all the work. I will let Counselor Shade give you an update. But in the end, we thought it was all a good idea.
Thank you. To cover all of the items, three of them have been written as ordained. This is gonna require two separate votes because there's kind of two separate things going on here. So, I'm gonna make the motion to adopt the language as ordained here and publish as required to a second, publish to a second meeting as required by law.
I think she said adapt and publish, right?
Not adapt.
Yeah, it's pass to a second reading and publish.
That's how she said adapt. Okay.
So, motion to pass to a second reading and publish as recorded by law?
Second.
Now, you?
So, the first part of this, now that we have a motion, the first part is to repeal Sections 10-3, 10-4, and 10-5. The other part, which I'm going to make a second recommendation or motion on, is that the committee also voted to repeal the additional license requirements and the fee associated with it. And I'll explain that separately. This is just for this language. My original communication was for us to take up these three items as part of the ordinance and then also review the license and fees separately. That was originally gonna go to the finance committee, but because the finance committee chair is not able to vote on that, it stayed with general government and we discussed it there. So, essentially, repealing these three sections, Section 10-3, requires secondhand shopkeepers to, to keep an itemized inventory of every single item that comes into their store. That is a burdensome requirement that no other type of salespeople have to do. I think the rules need to be the same across the board for everybody. And it's unfair for us to ask a shopkeeper to pay these extra expenses to itemize their entire inventory just in case something happens. We should have the same rules for a secondhand shop dealer as we have for a regular business that is not selling secondhand goods. Shouldn't be any different. 10-4 deals with dealing with minors. So, essentially, a minor could not sell products to a secondhand store or secondhand business. What that means is, let's say, there's a youth program and they do art and they want to find a place to sell their art. Nobody can do that if they've used secondhand goods. Because any, any kind of secondhand material or recycled material now prohibits them from doing those kinds of things. It also prohibits a 16-year-old from walking into a store and selling a copy of their video game or, or selling, selling a shirt. It's, it's, it's extra burdensome. We already have rules on the books for, for this kind of thing. We don't need extra rules that make it harder for minors to participate in society. The third regulation has to do with the business hours of a secondhand shop. It requires them to be open between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., no later, which would prevent them from being open during our downtown celebrations or extra events going on in the city. Other retailers do not have a restriction on their hours that they have to stop being in business by 7:00 p.m. And secondhand store dealers shouldn't have to deal with that either. Same rules for everybody. So, the recommendation is to repeal these three sections. And that, that is what we're going to do tonight, hopefully.
Counselor Harpin?
A few things. First of all, I, I think it's a good idea to send it to the solicitor for review. Is that something that's happened?
Um, this section is, has not been sent to the solicitor by review. None of these items are required by Massachusetts general law. They're just on the ordinance books from us directly.
Okay. Um, this doesn't have any, but you are planning to do more work on this, is it? What I understand?
There, there is another item that we will discuss after this one's over that we may need to send to the solicitor first, but we'll get to that after we vote on this one.
Okay. I, I just think it would be easier to have everything together, but that's okay. So, this ordinance is, is put in place for two reasons. To identify stolen property that may be received by dealers and to deter and prevent the sale or barter of stolen goods. So, there is a purpose to this ordinance. It was put in place, I believe, in the It was put in place, I believe, in nineteen ninety, and it hasn't been touched since then. I do understand that some of it here is burdensome, and I understand that. But when we start talking about, and I know the issue has been brought up, about people using Facebook Marketplace and all these other places, and how easy it is, and it is. However, all those sales are recorded. So there is a recording of all those sales, because they're done online. So this is just a different perspective. My other just general observation as a counselor sitting here is each council meeting, we get an agenda, and part of this agenda, at the end of the meeting, there's a category called licenses. And within that licenses, there's one that's called taxi cab license, and there's one that's called secondhand dealer shop licenses. So this city council is responsible for those two types of licenses, right? Each and every day, every time we're here, we're responsible for those licenses. And I just find it very, I guess I'm taken back a little bit, because as I look at these two ordinances, and we're working on both of them, one of them, which is the secondhand license, we're being much more lenient. The other one, we're being much more rigid and stringent. So it's just an observation that I had, sitting here and being part of this council, in trying to understand how and why we work on these ordinances, and why some of them we're working on to make them so much more difficult for businesses, and some of them that we're working on to make them so much easier.
Councilor Shade.
Yes. To, for clarification of one of your points about stolen goods, we did bring that up during the committee meetings. The majority of people who would sell stolen goods do not do so when they walk into a store. They do so online. They do so in other ways that are far less traceable. The other thing is, there are many secondhand stores or businesses who don't purchase directly from the public, yet we still require them to follow this same law, and we don't require other vendors to do the same. So the, it doesn't help really to prevent a crime, and as was said during our committee meetings by several store owners, we need to, there are already rules against stolen merchandise. There are already laws on the books against stealing merchandise. This really isn't helping to stop people from selling stolen goods. It's just adding more requirements to a business owner. We need to simplify the process and make it easier. So in regards to secondhand stores, there are already laws on the books, laws in mass general law. Our stuff is just making it more difficult, more burdensome. It's adding expenses to these businesses that are unnecessary, and it's time for it to change. When this was passed thirty years ago, the world was different. People did things a lot differently in the nineties than they do today. Today, you can list on Facebook, Craigslist, eBay, and none of these rules would apply. But if you walk into a brick and mortar store, now we have a bunch of extra additional rules that we're going to impose on a business, just because they're open downtown in North Adams, or in an actual physical location. That's the wrong approach. We need to modernize our ordinances with today, and we need to be fair across the board to everybody. Mass general law already covers what happens with stolen goods. We don't need this additional language that is archaic and doesn't work in today's, in today, in our ordinance. So again, it was recommended by the committee with support that we repeal these items.
Councilor Shade, can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
And I, Councilor Harbin alluded to it. Since you're going to bring, since you don't have the language here for the other changes you want to make.
The other changes would, are, one of them is essentially a fee.
Right, but you're, it's not in here, the language isn't in here for us to really talk about, and it wasn't part of the packet.
It was originally part of my communication.
Okay.
It was part of my original communication in sending this to the committees.
Okay. For some reason, this came through, just with, this came through with these on the business hours, dealing with minors, and record and purchase of sales. So my only question is, if you were going to do that, it seems like you would, if we did it all together, we would, one, save money in printing it. So if we could wait until, bring that other paper back with all the language, because this is the only one on the agenda.
Correct. So the other one is not so much ordinance change, and I can explain what it is.
Okay, go ahead.
So the other part of this is, under mass general law, and I'll read it, because I did so in committee, so everybody understands what we're talking about, it's mass general law, Part one, Title twenty, Chapter one forty, Section two oh two. It is essentially a master general law to have a signature on record, contents and terms of license fees. It essentially requires a secondary license, or a license to be on file with the city clerk's office for specific types of businesses, not limited to secondhand dealers, but also junk, old metals, junk collectors, pawnbrokers, billard saloons, pool, and a bunch of other items that aren't relevant at the moment. So with mass general law, we have, in our section, created a second license. So they already have to get a business license. We've created a second license that they have to apply directly through the city clerk's office, and they have to pay a fee on that every year. They already pay an application and license fee when they first sign up for a business. So we've created a second one. The business license that they get, that they apply for in the beginning, along with that fee, already covers this section of MGL. So we've essentially just created another one and added more fees, and require a second license, rather than just using the business license application and business license fee to cover secondhand businesses. It still covers the requirement, because they have to apply, their signature's on record, which is what this creates, and if they have a business license, and the business license is marked as a secondhand dealer, which it is during the business application, it covers having this requirement. So what we did as a city is, instead of going along with our business license and the fee that's associated on that application, we created a second license that they have to have, along with a second annual fee that they have to pay every year. So the proposal that was recommended and discussed during that committee meeting is to eliminate the second license and fee, because it's already covered during the initial business license granting and the fee that is associated with the initial business license.
Okay. I'm going to agree with Councilor Harbin on this.
Okay.
I think that we, we should have the proposal of what you want in ordinance and what you want to delete, because you're going to basically delete that part of it, too.
Yes.
Send it all to the solicitor.
Okay.
I would feel much more comfortable with that, with, you know, because of the crossover. And I do know, I understand Councilor Harbin's reaction, because that was kind of mine, was like, yeah, but what about people that are trying to sell stolen stuff? And I know things that have happened to people in Western Mass more several years ago, but I have that same concern. I understand that there's so many gazillion ways to sell things now that may not apply. But I would feel comfortable, more comfortable if we sent this to the solicitor, with all of the language that you want. So if we could, whoever made the motion, if we could rescind that and motion to postpone it to the next meeting, and then if you could get all of the language as it is, as you want it, as you amend it, so that we can send that to the solicitor via the mayor and copy me, is that, that way, we're in the loop, is all. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes. In that committee meeting, we did expect that there would be a solicitor opinion necessary. So we were expecting this, and I will rescind my original motion and move that we postpone this to the first meeting of November, and during that time, we will also get an opinion from the solicitor.
Yeah. Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilor Basahun. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At eight a.m., Councilor Bona has stepped aside. Motion carries. Council Paper twelve thousand three nineteen, Mayor's Communication Number ninety-four, to present a proclamation acknowledging LGBTQ History Month. Without objection, I will file the communication. Mayor?
Thank you, President Blackman. We would like to proclaim October twenty twenty-three as LGBTQ History Month, whereas October is observed as National LGBTQ History Month, celebrating the history and achievements of the LGBTQ community, and whereas October holds historical significance for this community, the First National March of Washington occurred in October nineteen seventy-nine to urge Congress to pass protective civil rights legislation. Spirit Day is held the third Thursday in October to speak out against bullying and stand out for youth who disproportionately face bullying and harassment because of their identities. Whereas this month also presents the ability to gain insight on current inequities impacting the LGBTQ community, and what we can do as family members, friends, colleagues, and elected leaders to better support these individuals. Now therefore, I, Jennifer A. Maxey, Mayor of the City of North Adams, proclaim October twenty twenty-three as LGBTQ History Month in the City of North Adams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Paper twelve thousand three twenty, Mayor's Communication Number ninety-five, Appointing James Haskins as a member of the North Adams Airport Commission for a term to expire October twenty-six, twenty twenty-six. Without objection, I'll file the Mayor's Communication. Motion to.
To approve.
Approve.
Second.
Councilor Aluskowitz, Councilor Wilkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper twelve thousand three twenty-one, Mayor's Communication Number ninety-six, Appointing Woodrow Boilat as a member of the Conservation Commission to serve the unexpired term of Elena Traister for a term to expire August first, twenty twenty-four. Without objection, I'll file the communication. A motion to appoint would be in order.
Motion to appoint. Second.
Councilor Sepians and Councilor Basahun. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Council Paper twelve thousand three twenty-two, an ordinance to amend Chapter Z by adding new Section nine point five, entitled Hospital Avenue Overlay District by adding new Hospital Avenue Overlay District under Section two point one Overlay Zoning District by adding new footnote six to Appendix B of Chapter Z, and to amend zoning map dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, to include the Hospital Overlay District. This needs to go to a joint public meeting with the Planning Board and the City Council, which is scheduled for November thirteenth. But I thought we might want to have a shot at it at first. Motion to refer to Planning Board for adjourned meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Shade, Councilor Aluskowitz. Mayor, would you like to talk? And I know Ms. Donahue is going to be here.
Yes. Attorney Donahue is here, as well as Joe from Berkshire Health Systems.
Okay.
If you'd like to give them just a moment to describe.
That would be great.
Attorney Donahue.
You can either go to that mic, or you're welcome to use my podium.
Oh, thanks.
Whatever you prefer.
That's going to be. Hi. Oh, great, thanks. My name is Vicki Donahue, and I'm a partner at Kane Hibbert and Myers, and here on behalf of the landowner currently, that is, who's bringing this petition. So the property is located on Hospital Ave. It's comprised of about twenty-nine acres, and as most of you know, then all of you know, I'm sure, then Berkshire Health Systems has formed a new not-for-profit, which is named North Adams Regional Hospital Corporation. It's not the old corporation, but a new one, which, following appropriate licensure, will open and operate a new critical access hospital at the location on Hospital Ave, providing the much anticipated inpatient services that people have been looking for. In conjunction with the opening of the critical access hospital, then BMC will be converting over some existing services to North Adams Regional Hospital Corporation, and those will include the emergency room, lab draw station, endoscopy, radiology, and some other services. In conjunction with this use of the campus, then BMC and others will continue to have services at this campus as well. BMC, for example, will maintain its renal dialysis services. We also have operated at the facility, the Williamstown Medical Rural Health Clinic, and then there are several other services that are provided at this campus, including ENT, orthopedic, and cardiac rehab providers. So we've been working with the mayor and with the building inspector, and also with the city solicitor, Joe Bard, to create an overlay district that will accommodate these various medical services and medical providers. The way that the bylaw is structured now, then it contemplates, you know, kind of an antiquated definition of hospital, which seems to suggest that there's a hospital that's going to be operating in this district. So this overlay district will allow BMC, and ARH, and other providers to continue to provide the services there and have flexibility going forward. So those are the kinds of, you know, changes to the ordinance that we're looking at. And we did it as an overlay, because it seemed to make more sense to be talking about this particular parcel. It's a series of tax map parcels, but it's what people recognize to be the North Adams Regional Hospital campus. So I think that, you know, we're just requesting that the city council take the first step towards review and refer it out to the Planning Board, and we look forward to that public hearing process. We'll be available to answer questions and present at that time, and we'll have additional folks coming in. And for now, I think we just want to convey our appreciation for your time, for the Planning Board's time, for all of the people who have been working on this project coming forward. And, you know, we appreciate that, and I hope we can be available and ask, answer any questions, and move this forward for, I think, the much anticipated opening of these new services at the hospital campus. Thank you.
I want to thank you for all, and the hospital, BMC, for all they're doing, and some of the things that are moving there. I had the misfortune to be the president of the council when the hospital closed, so it makes me really happy to see everything, not everything, a lot of it being returned to our community. I think our citizens, our residents, in not just North Adams, but the surrounding communities really need this, and I really appreciate it above it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Councilor Shade.
Yes. In looking this over, it sounds pretty generic and pretty normal. I do have one concern, and I'm sure it'll be brought up during the public hearing, and this will give you time to look into it. But essentially, in many of the other things we've been dealing with in terms of businesses and operations, we've been talking a lot about inspections and having our inspection department go and inspect properties when new businesses open, whether that be a short-term rental, whether that be a storefront. Essentially, this new zoning would allow a business to change, or a new business to open on the property without that inspection in perpetuity, the way it's written. I think that is a problem and a concern to me, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the language, but I understand it as written, that it would essentially eliminate that inspection requirement for the city, and I would not be in favor of that if that's an ongoing thing. If it's just a one-time thing to establish this nonprofit and get everything over to transfer, I'd be more than okay with a special permit that does that, but to eliminate the requirement for inspection altogether going forward in perpetuity is a problem to me. So perhaps that can be clarified at that meeting. Maybe I'm misunderstanding. I'm hoping that I am, because the way I read the language, that's what that would do, and I would have a problem with that. Thank you.
Do you have any question, comment on that?
Yeah.
Um, to the mic. That's for the people at home.
Thank you. Yes, we have actually talked with the building inspector about this, and what the goal is, is what's happening on this, on the campus here, which I think is different from other places where that requirement is in place, then we will have things like a certain medical office that's on the campus, and would be replacing it with another medical office or another use that is already going to be permitted under this overlay district. So if there's any change in the actual configuration of the building, then obviously, they're going to be going to the building inspector. they're gonna be going to the building inspector. The building inspector, I believe, has not been overseeing those changes as we've been moving forward from NARH to bringing in new services. So, it's something that, because of the medical nature, because of essentially a changeover in the use that's going from one provider to another, then it's not often, you know, requiring any kind of building inspection kind of things. And when it does require that, then the building inspector comes in and looks at that to make sure everything is in compliance with the code. But we can certainly address that at the meeting as well. But the thought was that it's really cumbersome to go in every time to say, okay, now we're not gonna have these docs here, we're gonna have these docs because we're changing over to someone else, because that requirement requires that you have a review when there's a change of a tenant or the change of the user. So, if we go from one doc to another and it's the same use and there's no other impact and the same parking requirements, all of those things are the same, then if there's no change in the building configuration, then we would like the flexibility to do that without continually coming back every time there's a changeover in that type of use. But we'll certainly address that.
Anyone else? So, the motion is to refer to the joint public hearing, which is already published. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Return date, the 14th, the first meeting in November, well, 14th, it'll be the next day. So, yeah, you'll be here Monday and Tuesday. Just, we're gonna bring it back on Tuesday as long as they don't have a continuation at the planning board. Thank you. I'm going back to the beginning of the agenda, sorry. Do we have any communication?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. So, you guys had in your pack, you guys, sorry, I hate that informal. In your packet, the clerk included a communication regarding her conversation with the attorney general's office and the form she filled out, the ethics, I'm sorry, the state ethics commission. And she filled out the form, which is attached. At this point, Mr. Valiers had not been appointed to the, as a, what do we call them? Election worker. But at this point, there's also the opportunity to appoint alternatives. I think the clerk has mentioned she's already had a few people dropping out either because of family or scheduling or illness. So, that would give her the opportunity to appoint him as an alternate, which does not have to come before the council. But she wanted to be upfront with everybody and share that information with you so that if he did get called as an alternate, you wouldn't show up at the polls and be disconcerted. So, I just want to, we want to make sure you communicate. It doesn't hurt to have somebody there who's been through an election. So, the more people we can get. And not only that, if there's anybody out there who might want to work at the elections, you could always contact the city clerk and be an alternate. So, she can, I'm sure, could use some help, particularly since we changed the hours on her. Is that, are there any, it's just a communication. So, if you have any questions, please reach out to the clerk. Counsel Shade?
Yes. I just want to thank the clerk for providing this information and going about the process. I think it's a great idea to have another person with some experience who served during an election season to help. And thank you for doing the paperwork and dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's to make sure that we have the required assistance necessary. So, great job. Thank you.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Out of curiosity, I'm sure. There must be other people. Why was he disqualified in the first place?
He wasn't. There was a question as to the Mass General law regarding employment and service and timeframes.
Meaning that he had to be out of his job as the clerk?
Depends on, it depends, there was a question about it. So, the clerk researched it.
Okay. Thank you.
Instead of holding up the presses, we did that instead. Anything else? So, we don't have any taxi licenses. We don't have any secondhand licenses. It's open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Please go to the mic, give your name and address for the record. You have two minutes. Oh, it's awful quiet tonight. Never say that. No one wants to speak? Mayor's updates.
I just want to remind everyone that MBCC will be having trick-or-treat in the downtown on Friday, October 27, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. We will also have our citywide trick-or-treat on Tuesday, the 31st, from 5:30 to 7:00. There was some confusion thinking that we were canceling the citywide trick-or-treat. So, that's been clarified. So, come all goblins and ghosts and whatever. Thank you.
Committee reports in minutes. Liaison updates, counselors concerned. Counsel Sepiansa?
I just want to remind everybody that in two weeks is our city elections. Please get out there and vote. We have mayor, city council, school committee, and the McCann School Committee. So, please get out there and vote. Every vote counts. And I encourage everybody to make an effort, either early voting, which I believe started today, and/or traditional voting at the polls on November 7. Thank you.
Last day to register to vote is the 28th.
28.
And your office will be open?
Yep.
Even though it's Saturday?
We are on Saturday, open from 9 until 3.
So, you can early vote in person, you can register to vote, you can still get mail-in ballots and absentee ballots, and you can show up on Election Day. We'd love to see you. Counsel Bona, anyone else have anything to add? A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Bona, Counsel Wilkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.